Yeah.
Oh, I had a fertilized.
The laws of the insurance. I thought it was.
It was.
He was just a sister.
He has his personal.
Yeah. We've been on there. Okay. We've been. We've got to make sure. She wants you better.
Yeah.
She wants to. We got you.
Okay, thank you.
We're both.
Yep. We have the dog down there.
I don't. Three years. Fifty percent. Okay. Yeah. Well, we have that. Yeah, I worked along with. Actually, I was working with this one. That's one of mine.
Oh, yeah.
So I'm on that. It's like shifts.
Call is made to order. Stewart City Council pending agenda Monday, July fourteenth, two thousand twenty-five sixteen. Council chamber call to order. Dudley, Patrick.
Here.
Russell.
Here.
Morgan.
Here.
Kava.
Here.
Agenda approval, consent agenda approval of events, joint meeting six nine two thousand twenty-five, regular meeting of six nine two thousand twenty-five, and special meeting of six nineteen two thousand twenty-five. Approval of financial statements as of six thirty two thousand twenty-five. Approval of bills as presented, approval of liquor license, Kelly's tab.
Make motion.
Second, how do you go? Patrick?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yep.
Kava?
Yes.
Okay. Public work department bid received. We opened these up earlier. The tree removal. And swinger lawn care service was eight thousand three hundred ninety-six dollars. K and A removal was nine thousand fifty-four dollars. West Central Tree Service fifteen thousand eight hundred. And Iowa Tree Team seventeen thousand one hundred forty-five. We usually go to lowest bid.
Make a motion. You said the lowest bid.
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
Second.
Awesome. Two seconds. How do you go? Patrick?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Kava?
Yes.
I got one question, Ace. Where's the funding coming to take these down? Oh, okay.
I wanted to thank the guys for coming out. They've had to come out twice for that tree.
Yeah.
Um, the only thing I'm worried about is it's ready to fall again. What's left? Um, can you guys think about maybe doing an emergency fund for like something like this? If it ever comes up that they don't have to wait for bids, that they they can get out there and they can get it cut?
I've got the ability if there's a tree necessary, I can go ahead and do emergency. And which is going to do that on the south side?
Well, because this one, the first one.
I went past it. Yeah, I saw that.
This tree's a hundred and twenty-three years old.
Yeah.
And the first one fell June twenty-first. The other limb fell Thursday night from the storm. The other two limbs are just barely hanging on. And if they fall, it's going to hit Tom Cooper's house and it's going to hit my house.
So when swingers supposed to be back?
Uh, I cannot answer until I make contact with them and see what is going to.
But I I just want to thank all the guys that came out.
Yeah.
They did a great job.
Okay, five. You're on cam or?
Yeah, so Tom is not able to be here for somebody like us to call him. If you don't mind leaving.
This is Tom.
Hi, Tom. This is Sarah with the City of Stewart, and we have you on speakerphone for the council for your presentation.
Hi, how are you doing tonight? Good.
Good.
Excellent. So would you like me to just kick right off and begin?
Right. Fine.
All right, so my name is Tom Logan. I run Steel Highway Railcams. And I I have a YouTube channel that has approximately forty-one thousand subscribers and gets about one point two, one point one million views every month. And the goal or the mission of YouTube channel is to feature railroad-related um, locations. Um, every location that I have except for one that's at an airport. Um, the rest overall at railroad-related locations or railroad-adjacent locations. And when I had reached out to Brenda originally, I had asked her about putting in webcam equipment at the Stewart Depot. Um, I understand you guys have spent a decent amount of money fixing up the depot, restoring it, uh, using it as an event center now, and you have internet at that location. Is that all correct?
Yes.
Yeah. So, um, I provide the basic install for the internet equipment. I install the equipment and I provide the um, provide the equipment and then I recoup the the um, I recoup the the revenue off of the YouTube channel to pay back that equipment over time then. Um, and then what I ask for in return is just access to utilities and internet so that the to broadcast the feed out to YouTube. Um, depending on your local utility rates, you're probably looking at being twenty-eight and ten dollars a month worth of electricity to run the server equipment and the webcam. Uh, but aside from that, it's just using the app that you already have installed. And, um, you know, then the whatever the slight increase would be to the electrical cost. Um, for you, for your location, I would probably put in a webcam facing west toward the crossing to the west of the depot. And, um, it would go twenty-four hours a day. And it would be something where if the webcam equipment ever needs to be replaced, that would be my responsibility. You know, if there's if there's storm outage or, you know, utilities dropping because of because of a storm going through the equipment, it's pretty much automated and it's set to kick right back in as soon as power comes back. Um, it requires mostly most of the troubleshooting I can do remotely. There might be an occasion where there's a bad electrical storm and I might require someone to go over there and manually reset some power, but that'd be it. Um, I'm certainly not expecting you guys to be webcam experts or computer experts or anything of that nature. You know, if there's if there's any sort of a any sort of an issue, it's going to be myself or someone else who's knowledgeable coming out there to to actually replace the equipment or or troubleshoot it. Anything beyond just basically turning the power on and off. Uh, so that's kind of my spiel. What questions do you have for me?
So, Tom, this is only one camera on the outside of the building facing west?
That's right.
Okay.
That's right. I would put it as high up as I could to get it kind of up under the eve so it'd be protected to whatever degree is, you know, possible from the roof. And, um, I I try as much as possible to use existing, um, if there's any sort of a access point or a hole or anything in the wall that's already there, I try to use that rather than punching new holes in the wall, for instance. But that's something that until I get out there and see it, I will know for sure what I'm dealing with.
Yeah, it it's a brick building, so you probably have to have a hammer drill to drill through.
Yeah, and I have a I have a hammer drill with an eighteen-inch bit that can go through. I I've gone through just about anything with it all the way up to and including cinder blocks and concrete. Yes. So I try to minimize, like, I'm not I'm not here to punch gaping holes in your walls and try to, you know, make it look unsafe unsightly at all. Whatever I do, I'm going to do it as as minimally as possible.
So, Tom, uh, what what does the city of Stewart get out of this?
Advertising, word of mouth, revenue. You know, I talked a little bit about the viewership at the beginning. That's that's something that, um, so anytime that you have any sort of an event that you'd like to feature, um, there's a scrolling, there's a scrolling banner at the top of the webcam that we can incorporate messages. So one of the things that it would say is, you know, sponsored by the city of Stewart, Iowa, or, you know, go check out Stewart, Iowa. Um, and the location of the of the event of the the depot or your event center is. Um, one of the things we could do is we could have scrolling information up there to say, hey, if you want to book the depot, go ahead and check this out. And here's the location and the contact information. Um, I know that Brenda had said that you have a small display or museum there as well. That's something else that we could feature for people to, you know, like have the hours of operation if they wanted to come in and check out the depot, they would know when to do that. Um, but yeah, it's it's advertising, it's word of mouth, it's getting yourself out there on a platform, on a medium that most towns don't have available to them, quite honestly. So what else have you got for me?
I don't have anything.
I guess I think, oh, go ahead.
I think the only question I have is, you know, you put the camera in and we decide, hey, we don't want it anymore, what looks after it?
Oh, then just thirty days. Come and tell me that you want the camera removed. And within thirty days, I'll come in and take it down and I'll use the equipment somewhere else. Like I say, it's, you know, it's my equipment. I'm not asking you to buy it. And so therefore, if you don't want the camera anymore, then I'll come back and collect the equipment and move it out of the way. Yes.
And looking at your YouTube, you have about forty-one thousand subscribers right now, is that right? Does that sound about right?
That's correct. Yep. Yep, and that translates into a little over a million views per twenty-eight days.
You said it's probably runs around ten bucks a month for the electricity, right?
Yeah, I mean, it depends on your local utility rates, obviously. Uh, but from what I've seen and from what I've found from other host sites, that eight to ten dollars a month seems to be pretty accurate. Yes. And so that would, yeah, that's something that I just try, kind of try to warn people like, you know, you you've got a webcam and a server in there, which is just, it's just a small four Mac PC, but it's in there running twenty-four hours a day and it is consuming a small amount of electricity. And, um, you know, it's quite honestly, it's one of the cheapest forms of advertising you could ever hope to get because it's as I put up more cameras, it draws more and more eyeballs onto what's going on and and eventually it it will, you know, it the rising tide that lifts all boats, right? Everybody that sees it and is checks it out, some percentage of those people are going to come, they're going to drive through Stewart, they're going to stop at your gas stations and your restaurants and and do some business there in town. And they're going to, um, be interested and and tour the depot or even just walk through the through the grounds outside.
Brenda, do you have any thoughts on this? No recommendation one way or the other?
I'm okay either way.
Minimal cost and like James says, if you feel you don't want it, you know, disconnect.
Now, that's something that the city could handle. We wouldn't have to ask the utilities to take the ten-dollar cost.
The seed base.
Oh, the seed, we did that.
Yeah, Matt. Okay, yeah. Well, uh, due to the contract, seed is pays twenty-five thousand dollars a year rent on that. So you never thought of asking seed?
Okay.
Second question is, you didn't remember the camera. What about we're under a Zoom meeting over there? This camera's going to be taking up bandwidth. So how does that affect my Zoom meetings?
Tom, did you hear that?
I could I could not make that question out very well, though. Could you repeat the question, please?
Your camera's going to be taking up bandwidth. What about people?
That's right.
What about the people that need to conduct a Zoom meeting from that location? What about the internet users for that for that?
What I do is whatever bandwidth is there, I don't take up more than fifty percent of the bandwidth. Um, if you're on some kind of a fiber line, you're not going to even notice the difference. If it's on a slower speed like a BSL or a regular cable modem, I just make sure that I don't take up more than fifty percent of the bandwidth so that there's plenty of overhead for other people to. I mean, I'm guessing, for instance, you probably share the Wi-Fi password if people are are, um, using the facility. For instance, they've log in with their phones if they're there for a for an event of some sort.
Uh, it's not fiber, it's through an antenna.
Okay.
So we don't have fifty percent to spare. And third is that system's provided a donation by Coon Valley Topco. I would like to get third lessons.
Certainly.
So that's not, that's a delay.
And that's something, yeah, that's something where, you know, find out what they're providing you for a for a, um, upload and download speed. Yes.
Can you try to have that?
Speed test on it.
I was going to say, do we have any idea what that is? So Coon Valley, it would be their Wi-Fi. Would that be, actually, I don't know their offering. I know they offer fiber, uh, but it's obviously not fiber too, that since it's an antenna. Um, I imagine probably still have to be pretty good speed over there. So we just do our homework, maybe just take this or something for now or?
I'd say Matt ought to run it through seed and check it out with Coon Valley.
I have a fourth. I'm not a fan of putting more holes into a historic building. And then if, for whatever reason, this camera has to be removed, how are you going to fill those holes? That's what I'm trying to think about.
So, Tom, at this point, I think we're going to have Matt do some more research with our seed development and Coon Valley, who supplies the internet over there.
Certainly. And, um, you have my phone number now, obviously, and you have Brenda's contact as well.
Yes.
Yep.
Any other questions for Tom then?
No. I do not.
Okay, thanks, Tom.
Thanks, Tom.
Yeah, no problem. Happy to help and just let me know what you decide.
Okay. Thanks, Matt.
Yeah, we'll talk to you soon. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Six wastewater operating position update. Dave, and before we start on this, there is a DNR report sent to the city. It was addressed to the mayor and the council. Where it's not on our table, where is it at?
I have a copy of it. It just came the other day.
But could, I mean, if it come, it should have been addressed to the council and the mayor. Can you make copies so I have it before we discuss this? Just wait a minute. Is this a wastewater station meeting or? Another day. Thanks, Sarah. I'll give you a minute to read this and then I'll hear you talk and I'm going to have Jim talk too.
Thank you.
Danny Craig?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, Dave, come on. And then I'm going to have Jim Henderson talk and then I'm going to talk to on this issue. Go ahead.
Um, real quick, right on my place, but, uh, flip the camera. I would probably, I've got experience in the marketing, so it's part of it, but I would just ask if he can reference any communities he's worked with and maybe use those give those reference communities a call and see how the relationship has been. If there's been any monetization that the town has received as a result of his cameras being there. So just so you know, I can pull. Um, so, well, great. Thanks for looking, come up here today again. Um, so, uh, questions that we might have, uh, some anticipating this. So we submitted two candidates so far for the wastewater operator three position. Okay. Uh, we've talked to no less than twenty people. We've targeted more than that. Uh, it's just a matter of that's who we've been able to talk to. Um, so some of the the challenges we're seeing, of course, going to this, it's going to be a challenge. Uh, some of the challenges we're seeing are, A, relocation, um, or not having the right certification. Um, it's just a combination of different things. For those we've talked to who initially expressed interest, the relocation aspect of it was was the hurdle. Uh, just couldn't make it happen. Um, and our and our calls out to across the state. Um, what we have found is on the eastern side of the state, the candidates that that would be qualified as operator three or even some types of uh, very experienced twos, from a compensation standpoint, they're right at or just above over after this position. And I, and again, this is just our calls, talking to feedback that we've received on the eastern side of the state. Western side of the state, not the case. Um, this this compensation for this position is great compared to what we've heard and seen um, out there, um, just from the networking I've done. On the west side in particular, it is a lot of what we would consider people, towns coaching people from other towns. And so, um, sometimes it's bad blood that that happens as a result of that, but, um, but that's where it's at. Overwhelmingly, the people we talked to, not just candidates, but also, um, other places like Iowa Water Association, um, DMAC, um, who has these programs, there is a huge need for operators. They're just not, we're not replacing as fast as they even. Um, so that just creates another problem in and of itself. And I know they're working on some initiatives to try to drive more people into that field. Um, I just don't know if they're going to be able to it in the time that it's needed. So lots of challenges for this position. Um, that said, uh, two strong candidates for the position. Um, I don't want to go too much into who this is just for confidentiality sake. Uh, I don't know if you guys had an opportunity to review the candidates?
Who comes as a?
Okay. Um, so we know one, um, is is, uh, somebody who's regionally advantageous. Uh, this gentleman is an operator, wastewater operator two. Um, he's just not a three because it hasn't been a need for. Um, so lots of experience, um, somebody just from our talk to him. Based on what we know, what the position is, somebody who's probably the, I would say, probably the the ones that would come right in um, for the most part, um, for a lot of parts of, uh, who was a wastewater operator, Jimmy can probably speak more to that than me. Um, but, uh, but from him, it's just a matter of getting that certification. Um, I know with him, he's twenty-five, he just needs twenty-five credits and he can have it by September. Okay, September one being the target date for having somebody hired so they can train with Jimmy up until January he retires. Um, the other one has, uh, six years as a wastewater operator three for a larger community. Um, since then, he's been in industrial maintenance, uh, PLC programming, um, control systems, basically all the things that go into uh, running the facility. Um, has a lot of great added value when it comes from with experience. A lot of times I would say, Jimmy, you'd be right, you guys typically use a third party to come in and work on the control systems.
Some.
What's that?
Some of them.
Some of them. Yep. Um, this guy has the experience, skills and knowledge to do those things himself. Um, so that's a that's an added value there.
Did you say he's a grade three now?
He he was at one time. Hasn't been because he hasn't needed it for where he transitioned. Um, but he's he's somebody that would be able to start in September. The only downplay downside of that is he would not be able to relocate until almost halfway through next year.
So you said he was a grade three. So he, you, Jim, maybe you can help me out. So you you lose that from just not?
I'll cover that in my in my conversation.
Okay. Okay.
So, yeah, because just continuing to be as accurate, you're going to have to to maintain your certification level. And so he just hasn't been in the field. So he hasn't needed it.
And the trouble is if you got to have from grade two to grade three, nine hundred CEU hours to get that, that's pushing to drag it to the end of the year. Plus, if you do that, what happens if y'all pass?
That's a good question.
And that's where.
And that's why from our standpoint, it was when we we talked to him initially, it was like, okay, what's it going to take for you to get there to be eligible to take the exam? And then what does that look, when do you plan on taking it? And that and that way we can be, you know, probably basically have an informative advance for you for consideration.
So, uh, they helped me understand just your part of the business, part of this. So you went out, you had conversations with, uh, these two people. You guys don't actually do the interviews, do you? You just visit with them a little bit? Um, or do you do like formal interviews with these candidates?
Right. Good question. So our our initial contact is just the contact. Hey, do you have this or you? So our, our initial contact is just the contact, hey, oh, you have this, are you interested? We're gauging interest. If we get, yes, I'm interested, great, is this a good time to talk? If not, we schedule another time. Typically, we'll try to schedule another time just so that we have less distractions because it is going to be an interview to screen. We're gonna go through, and we're gonna go through their entire resume history. And we're gonna ask them where they were at, for how long, send us your resume, work and prepare information, we're gonna ask them all sorts of information. Why did you leave? Um, what are you looking for in a position? Um, we run the gamut, it's, it's a pretty thorough interview. Um, and then from that, you know, we, we talk to them about the position as well, give them the narrative that, that I developed after talking with, with everybody. Um, and from there, if it's something that they're definitely interested in, and we, we try to be as open and as transparent, as transparent as possible, um, with what the position entails. And from that point on, we get their permission to submit them, in which case, I do.
Yeah, okay. I just didn't know how in depth you guys go with them, or if you just have like a coffee table discussion real quick, then you pass it on, then, you know, the city of Stewart needs to do a formal interview with them or not, or if you really dig into them and have a good interview?
Yeah, I would say, and for the most part, it's not as formal as an interview would be.
Sure.
And because we just feel like in, in this step of the process, we want them to be relaxed, we want them to just be disinformation.
Yeah.
Um, and, and in our experience, really, people will tell you a lot more when they're comfortable. Um, and they'll be a lot more honest and open about things when they're comfortable. Um, and so we, we frame it as, we're, we're consultants. Uh, I'm a consultant for you, and our recruiting team, they're consultants for the candidates. And so they're, they're working for the candidate. And so, um, anyhow, so we, it's, it's a thorough process. Uh, we ask them also, any background things we should know about? You know, we go pretty far in depth into things. And for the most part, we feel like if anytime during that conversation, there's something that would make them not a good fit, it's the red flag or something, we would move them out.
Okay, good.
So this one gentleman or person, whoever that has the twenty-five credits, what is that, is that like? Cause I, I believe, uh, having visited, uh, with our current wastewater, each credit is ten hours, is that correct?
I think we can probably see more.
That's correct. So he would need?
Each CEU is ten class hours.
Correct, so he would need two hundred and fifty hours to make hits?
Hmm, might, yeah, uh, from an hour standpoint.
Yeah.
My understanding was, it was, he was basically told me he would need to pick, basically take a couple of days to knock them all out.
Yeah, that's where I get a little, I don't know about anybody else, I get confused on what they need, you know, where's the, where's the, I get the nine hundred continuing stuff, you know, but then you have like twenty-five, is that two hundred and fifty hours? And then you take your test and then you go for a pass, you know, what is it, so. Maybe you can.
Well, I, I talked to him a little bit, but my, my thing is, we've been going on this since February, it's ticking down. And if we don't have a grade three ready to go, grade two possibly taking this training, possibly passing this test. I mean, we've had different people not pass tests in the whole city and then have to send them back. January ninth's deadline.
And I think, you know, one of the options in that letter is looking at contacting with a company that supplies that, that probably should be, at least on our radar, you know, right now, for sure. That we're gonna look at that, you know, but we still, like I said, I don't know how you get nine hundred hours by September. Or, or even anywhere, I don't know if that's, that's a lot.
Jim's gonna talk about it, and I said, it's not, it's not an easy task.
Maybe that's, maybe that's what we need to hear from, kinda understand the hours requirements and what goes into that, the testing and stuff.
This is a lot of beyond your forty hours, or fifty, whatever you're working, you daily stick.
Right.
Doing it all.
Exactly, exactly.
Okay, any more questions today before I, Jim, have Jim talk?
I may not right now, but go ahead, I circle back.
Yeah, and thanks for getting me, you know, getting that out to the council.
Yeah, and I would say if, if there's any interest in these candidates, I would, I would talk to them sooner versus later.
Yeah, for sure.
Especially the one we just sent today, he's got some really highly sought out skills. I know he's actively interviewing, uh, that's the one thing to understand, if we have a resume and it's somebody interested in, I would, I would definitely recommend moving sooner versus later, even if we're not looking to hire till September or even after that.
Yeah.
Um, because in this, this position is in high demand. So, they're, they're, if we call them and, and they haven't been looking, and then we talk to them about the position they're looking for, and we talk about the comp, and they realize, you know what, maybe I'm not getting paid enough, maybe I need to look other places. You don't wanna lose out on those candidates.
For sure.
So.
Okay, Jim, then explain to everybody about the CEU and hours.
Okay, I have been in contact with the DNR numerous times in the last three months, probably in regards to this. To be able to qualify to take a grade three test as a grade two operator, you have to have a cumulative total of ninety CEU hours. Currently, neither applicant that we have is a grade three. The one, as far as I can tell from the paperwork that I've gotten, doesn't hold a license currently. So, that individual would have to take a grade one, then a grade two, then a grade three. You don't get a jump, because you were a grade three, you don't get a test as a grade three. You have to go through the steps, one, two, and then three. And there are time requirements in between those tests, not a lock, but there is a time requirement in between those tests. Um, the other candidate is a grade two, and I've talked to him personally. He has twenty-one CEU hours on the books. He can, he can take half of his ninety as experience, so that would leave forty-five. Minus his twenty-one would leave twenty-four CEUs, which is two hundred and forty class hours to be eligible to take the test. Then the next thing is passing the test. Grade three, first time taking the test is about a, according to the DNR stats, about a seventy percent pass rate, first time. It's a lot of, grade three, the higher grade you get, the more difficult, the more defined the tests get. Lot of chemistry, lot of biology, that type of stuff, and those type of plants, as I'm sure Forrest can attest to.
So, if, if this person was aggressive, how long would it take to accomplish those hours?
It takes, it takes quite a bit. When I went from, see, when I've switched from the utility side to the city side, I was given eighteen months to get a grade two wastewater license. Back in that day, I could use my time in service as a licensed water treatment operator to be able to take my test back in the day. I mean, that's been, that was back in two thousand five. So, I could go directly and take a grade two test if I wanted to. And then when we upgraded the plant in two thousand and ten, I had to move from a grade two to a grade three. So I had to make up, I had to make up fifty CEUs, so that's five hundred hours to be able to take my grade three test. Which I did on my own time. I took those hours on my own time through, the city paid the materials through Kirkwood, but I did most all of that on my own time. And then I was fortunate, I went past, took the test, passed the test, grade three is taken care of. That's not always the case.
The, the, can people in education hours or something that you have to go to a class?
You can do it several different ways, you can do it online, uh, through like Kirkwood, um, they have different, different units that you can take. Each unit is, uh, most of them are average seven to nine CEUs. So that's seventy to ninety hours through this unit, but those units, a lot of times, depending on how aggressive you are, um, they can take you two or three months to accomplish. Because at the end of every chapter, there's a test, you send those in, and then at the end of that, there's a final test that they send, you have to name a proctor. And they send the test to that proctor. When I did it, I used, Adam Moby was my proctor, and then he would give me the test, I would do it, he would send it back to Kirkwood. And that worked out well. But I mean, it's time consuming.
Right, right, that's the big thing that I didn't, it's like, how are you gonna get, you know, two hundred and fifty hours of stuff? You're asking a couple of days, you know?
And when we started this, we did specify that we were looking for a grade three operator because of the time constraints. But then, I did mention this a year ago.
Right, right.
So.
And Jim, you've got grade three, you have to do continuing education.
You have, yeah, you have to have, um, currently I carry a grade two water treatment, a grade three water distribution, and a grade three wastewater. So I have to have, for a grade two, one and two licenses require one CEU new, basically ten CEU hours, or excuse me, one CEU hour every two years, so that's ten class hours. Grades three and four require two CEUs, which is twenty hours every two years. So the different conferences that I go to and stuff, I get CEU hours for those conferences, and that's how I maintain all three of those licenses, plus pesticide licenses.
So you said, we've been going on this for a year, what's your recommendation now? I'm worried like you are, January ninth, we're gonna have to ask them.
I mean, I would probably, if you don't have the candidates, I would probably at least reach out to, uh, your contract company to, get some more particulars and, you know, get some, uh, get some dollar, some costs.
How long did Dave Mellin help us out?
Um, probably, what, Ash, probably four years, five years?
Yeah.
Something like that.
Yeah, we've done that, until we got.
But see, you, and that was okay when we were a grade two plant, you could do that, you could hire an operator by half the data. Grades three and four, you cannot do that.
How much time, like you said, uh, the one candidate doesn't have any license right now, so if they take a, a one test, how long do they have to wait to take the two?
You know, I'm not sure on that because they've changed a lot of their hours, but where he has held a license prior, I don't, I don't know if that holds, you know, much weight. I don't know, so I don't know what that time window is.
Rough, I'm not, wouldn't hold you, would you say is it a month or shorter?
I would say probably, you're looking at probably thirty days in between tests. If I was.
Okay, that's fair.
Forrest, would you have a?
I don't.
Okay.
I mean, that's, that's a good, fair number, if they pass it on the first floor.
And that's, that's just it, you know, can they pass the test the first go around, that's, you know, that's the next thing.
Well, the only solution I got is to, uh, tell Jim that he has to stay.
I'm doing the eighteen month numbers, basically, so.
You're right.
Okay.
Thanks.
Any others?
No.
No, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
So, I think, well, I think, I think, you know, like Jim said, and I think it's pretty, that it's pretty clear that we need to reach out to the content, you know, and, and see where our cost is on that. I'm kinda torn, you know, I mean, yeah, you could, you could give each one of these guys a chance to see if they can get that, you know, but which one, which one do you?
I'm two of us. Get, I'd like to work with him and get the third option here, with the contract.
Keep the contract open.
I've done that many, many years ago, you know, I had no choice, because that field is really hard.
Sure, sure.
It, it's not like any other field. So you have to bring someone and work with him to get, to get all these license, you know? And then, to satisfy the state, you get the contract.
Right, like you have that in your back pocket.
Yes.
You know?
That's kinda, uh, my way of looking at it. We get, because hard with the grades leave from someone else, because he's only one drop in there all day, so he's not gonna leave.
No, I get it.
So, we kinda look at the grade two, try to get him, work with him, who's what Jim just had said. To get him to get the grade three, yeah, you're taking your chances and all that stuff, but that's what's gonna happen to anyone. And then, get the contractors to satisfy this.
Jim, I have two other applicants not provided by, uh, the Palmer Group also that are grade two eligible to take a grade three currently.
There you go.
So.
That would be the way to do it. To kinda, who are you contracting to satisfy the state, you get someone, you work with him, and take advantage of having Jim around to help him out. You know, you get him to get grades three.
So now we have kind of like four candidates that?
Two from Palmer and two with Jim.
Sorry, you're saying we work with all four of them, or? You work with all four of them, or what do you do?
We just, Jim decide which one that he wants to work with and will go for.
Could I, I, I know, uh, Mr. Cobble and myself is kinda on, on this little subcommittee, if you wanna say whatever it is, but, yeah, could it, could, could we maybe just have a meeting, um, have Jim involved, and just, just all, look at all four candidates and just have a discussion?
That's fine.
Yes, absolutely.
Do that.
And my past experience having a subcontract come in, you're not gonna get near the dedication work is what Jim's doing. I see you go in there, down there five minutes and off, and I'd ask, I'd, did you repay the travel? No, I said he down in five minutes and gone, you're paying him two hours every day.
I know, it's.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I live right next to the suburb, and I know.
But these contractors, yeah, but we will need to schedule meetings.
Do that.
Okay. All right.
Okay. Okay, seven resolution number twenty-five, Tennessee, setting a date, what's this?
Second one.
Second one there for office.
I'll second it.
Second, Aliebo, Patrick?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Cobble?
Yep.
My question on that is, I'll set the date, does this go to Luis or anybody can buy the contract? Just Luis, okay. Is he, just okay? I hope so. Yeah, okay, the lawyer's gonna, okay. Eight, resolution number twenty-five, Tennessee.
I, I would just, chip shots, I would just add that.
Book here?
It, not, not, yeah, Phil Hunter was really good to work with on this financing, uh, the rates five and a half percent. They were very reasonable and, and he was terrific, so would encourage approval if you're, uh, of the same mind, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Second?
Second, Aliebo, Patrick?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Cobble?
Yes.
Okay. Council Mike Patrick?
So this is just, I'm gonna address the council here, it's just mainly for information. I, we don't necessarily have to do anything with it tonight, but I just wanted to get it out there that maybe something along the lines that we look at later down the road. Um, as everybody, most people know that my wife and I are building a new house on the south side of Stewart, within the city limits. Um, currently, we're using, um, two utilities there. We do have a temporary pole for the framers in construction to use the power. And I also contacted, uh, utility company and they have set a meter, um, which, you know, months before we got all this rain or whatever, I did use water there, uh, to soak our, uh, ditches, uh, for several purposes, the sewer ditch, uh, for several purposes. Um, I did use, um, on, on the, the build-up we received from the city, um, we used thirty-seven hundred gallons of water, which, um, that I did use. We also used the electric there. However, when we got our bill, I was a little confused on why I was getting charged, what I was getting charged. Um, so, we're not even moved into the house yet, obviously, it's just in rapid stage. But we got charged garbage. AB's don't stop by there to pick up the garbage. All the garbage goes into a dump trailer and I take it to the landfill myself. So I'm getting charged fourteen dollars and twenty-five cents for garbage pickup, which, like I said, I'm not using garbage there. The sewer, it's very hard to tell if people are using the sewer or not. We are hooked up to city sewer. And we got charged the minimum rate of the, the city sewer, which is fine. I kind of look at it as maybe a connection fee because we're not using sewer there. There's no stools there, there's no sinks, there's nothing there to be using sewer. So I, I get that we got charged that. But we use the minimum water, we use under four thousand gallons, the minimum water. Um, what if I used half a million gallons and I was, and that went in the dirt? Now I'm gonna get charged sewer on top of that, when right now, the way it sets, that's pretty much like an irrigation meter. You see what I'm saying? So this only kind of affects new housing, basically. Because I do use, and I do pay, at my current residence, I do use water to wash my vehicles, to water my flowers, to do whatever, and I still get charged that sewer, which I've never complained. We write the check, we pay for it, not a big deal. However, on the new builds like we're doing now, I don't understand how I can get charged for garbage pickup, and I don't get that, and get charged for sewer if I'm not using it. Now, if we want to look at it as a connection fee, sure. But if I were to use a couple hundred thousand gallons of water, how, how, how can we charge people for that? Like I said, this is just, I only knew this information because I'm going through it right now. Um, so, and I didn't know about it before. Um, but you know, if we're trying to draw people to town and build, um, out there where we're building now, are, are we charging the builders and, you know, those guys out there, then they're passing this on to the potential homebuyers? I don't know, but it's something to look at. You know, we did pay thirty-two hundred dollars for inspection fees for our permits, which we paid. I would think, in my own opinion, I would think that once B and K comes walking through, because they've been there a couple times inspecting, which is great, that's what we paid for. But I would think on the final walkthrough, when they're walking through the house, they can call up to City Hall and say, the Patrick's house ready to go. They have toilets, they have sinks. It could be occupied at any given moment. Hit the button, turn it on, charge them for garbage, the sewer, blah, blah. You guys see where I'm coming from a little bit on this? I'm just bringing it up for information. I'm not looking just because I'm on the city council looking for a deduction. I'm not, we just put, paid our bill. It's in the drop box. Crystal just put it in there when we walked in, so I'm not asking for any kickback or anything like that. I'm just bringing a awareness, so. Um, something we might change later down the road. I don't know. It's worth discussion. That's all I got.
Is that something I know in the building?
It's what the codes are. Just a policy, but I get that if you want to change the policy.
Well, and I get that, I get that, because I know, you know, you said it's just basically running water into the ground, right? Okay, so I know I was up at a utility meeting one time, and they were talking about uh, having a special meter for people that were watering their lawns.
Irrigation.
Okay, yes, irrigation, okay, so, and utilities are like, well, if we start giving this out, then everybody will want one, okay? So that's really, I think, where that should have gone is to utilities and see if we could get that special thing. And then you wouldn't be charged sewer, because if I go out and water my lawn, just because I got toilets there, now I have to pay
The sewer.
The sewer.
Right, right.
You know, so why would somebody that's building a new house, if they're still putting it on their lawns, not have to pay sewer? You know, it's still, you're running water. I ran water, but just because I got a toilet or sink, I have to pay sewer, so it's, it kind of, it's just an even playing field, I see. If, if it's going to the thing. But I think maybe we need to work with utilities a little bit more on actually getting a specific meter for people.
Sure.
Where they could do that. I know, I know it's a hassle. I, I can, I can understand that, but maybe that would be the way to avoid it.
Can we put that on the agenda for the June twenty-fourth meeting or joint meeting?
So one of the big issues with an irrigation meter is it does require a secondary backflow preventer, and those have to be inspected on a yearly basis, so there's a cost with that. I think I remember something about, you know, a hundred or so dollar cost at least in a previous.
Yeah, there, I don't, because I was up there when you were still on the thing, but I was under the impression they had like a separate one? That it's not a permanent install?
They don't, we don't do that. When I was on it, we know, they no longer did some sort of temporary, you know, hook it to your garden hose type thing, like some of the other cities around do that. They have like a little temporary one you can hook to a garden hose and then hand it in, and they go, oh yeah, you use ten thousand gallons this way, we're not gonna charge you if you don't have that.
For the sewer part, you know.
So that is something that they apparently may have done in the past with stuff and that's something to do.
I definitely think it's.
Sorry, did they, these guys talk about here? So that I can understand, you know, if they're not doing that. But it is the water thing. I could, I, I agree, you know, I, I don't know if we can, like I said, maybe put on the thing and really partner with them and say, you know, hey, it's been brought up before, can this be looked at? Because I get where you're coming from. I would like to go out and, well, I don't water my yard because I don't care. But if I did water it, you know, I'd rather have it not go through the sewer myself, you know, not have to pay that, but right now.
And that's what I said, you know, at my current house, yes, because the city wouldn't know if I'm actually using the, the city sewer, if I'm out there washing my driveway, and they don't know that, but at, at the house that we're building, you know, anybody could walk in right now and know that there's no facilities there where anything's going down the city sewer. So that's why I was kind of just saying, you know, on the new builds, you can kind of see where, yeah, it's not being used, um, but yeah, that's a conversation.
And have you, Dan's got.
Well, number one, the first thing I'm gonna say, when we bought our new house south of town, we did not manage to get charged for garbage pickup. We had to come in at City Hall and tell them we want a garbage pickup. The truck didn't come until we did that, and we didn't get charged until we did that. On the meter side, I know, I think our water guys mentioned it. It's the cost, like when you water your yard all summer and everything, it's not as much money to take. It might be like thirty bucks. And then the extra meter, probably you couldn't get the extra meter for that, and then especially if you got tested backflow meter, I don't know if they invite our cities whole fight to do that or our guys.
No.
So you have to bring somebody in to test that meter every year when you did it. That's why we don't do it, because of the cost.
Sure. I understand that.
Yeah. But this, the garbage thing, we had to tell them we want a garbage pickup, so I can understand.
Sure.
Now, I know having built a house, it's ten years ago, we went to the same thing. I, I can't remember if we were paying garbage at that time, it's been long enough, but I do know that we paid water and sewer. But having also worked at an architectural firm that worked with national builders, that was basically the norm. I mean, you paid for water and sewer just during the build process, and that's kind of how it went. So I know that's not uncommon.
Sure.
But yes, the city can make special allowances if we can do something like that, especially on the garbage side, say, hey, don't do the garbage until there's a certificate of occupancy and they, you know, they activate that service in the city.
Sure.
But.
Kevin's.
Cam or Kevin?
Oh, I was, the city do a occupancy permit. Like when B and K would go through and say, give them, give you the final, and then we call the city in.
Forrest said.
Yes. Yeah, we go seals.
So then that magic button should be hit then.
We've been remodeling house for five years and we've been paying sewer and garbage. There's no garbage pickup there. There's no sewer being used. The only water that's been you, being used is the water of the garden. We've been paying it for five years. Garbage and sewer.
Oh, just talk to him and I'll fix it. No, I mean, right.
Say, we pay garbage and I don't use it. It was in our dumpsters normally. Once they're very volatile, it came out just because we have to pay for it.
And so we had to call to get the truck to come to our house.
Obviously, well, because we have water, we have to have garbage. So I don't, I don't really agree with that, but what I was told. Yeah, and, and I'm not saying the system's broken by no means, because that's gonna be very difficult for the city to try to track, you know, just like your incident, Cory and, and Kim, you know, um, if you're not using it, but it might be something where I, I, I don't know, I don't even know how to fix it, and that'd be a lot for Scott to probably keep track of, like, no, I don't stop there, or yes, I do stop. You see what I'm saying? That'd be a lot for Scott to try to.
I don't have time to do that.
Right, right, right. So I don't know what would be a good solution, because I'm always like, if you have a problem, break me a solution. So I don't know what would be a good solution to fix this, but it's worth at least discussing and maybe trying to come up with a solution, for sure.
We had to call. I thought it was automatic. It wasn't.
So I'm, I'm kind of an outsider. I'm originally a refilled. So the take on your sewer, water, everything utility wise, does the city do a set a set thing where no matter if you haul your own dumpster, you have someone come in, do you pay a set contract per month on top of your bill? Did you have that? Or like, uh, your garbage?
Four twenty-five, most contractors collect from the individuals, ours goes through the city bill.
Yep.
Your bill, whether you put garbage out or not.
Yep, because I was billed, so I rebuilt a house and refilled, trying to get it sold. I'm up here now. I was paying the same thing, no matter if I had my forty foot yard dumpster. It's, it was just part of what's in the city codes. It says you pay X amount of money per month for that. So that's just another take into, same with water and sewer. And then with construction.
You have to look at it.
I agree from there.
With construction, with new builds, a lot, I did commercial construction at one. If you've got a meter and you are by a fire hydrant, you can get a meter that hooks up to that. And for a new build, it just accumulates all whatever gallons you used in six months of building it, and then you get back charged from there.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Yep.
Any other discussion on this? That's it? Okay, thank you. Long the panel. Cobble, third mission. Jim?
Right, so this relates to my own handout that's I do at places. It was, it seemed to be, be timely to start to look at uh, financing options for the most recent housing phase that you're getting close to being able to determine the final overall project costs. Uh, so I go through, I'll just go through this briefly in the interest of time. The assumptions that I've used are noted on, on the second page, page two. Assumes this school, the school uniform levy is not removed from the tip calculation. I, I think I wanted to point out as well on item four, I sensed during the discussion on the police department that there might be a potential appetite for the council to adjust the levy. I'll be very direct with you as, as the statement in four B. The levy to generate this uh, additional tip revenue to pay for this housing phase, the city's levy needs to be about a dollar higher to support that much tip debt. That's noted in four B. Five, I've not included any debt yet for Front Street or the White Pole Road project. And six, I outlined the cash funding sources that are, that are available. Um, and seven, I've assumed that the cash is applied toward the first three years of debt service, because if you apply it as upfront cash to buy down the debt, you just don't get far enough in terms of reducing the debt service payments for the next three years. So that's the assumptions that are noted there. This third page just gives an overview of interest rates where we stand today, looking back at the past three months. We're at a pretty stable point in the bond market. This is a ten-year treasury over the past three months. We're not at the low point, but we're also not at the high point you see there in, in mid, mid to late May. Uh, page four is that this is an overview of the project costs that were funded originally from the twenty-twenty-three short-term project notes. This is broken out and uh, I got some information from Forrest and from Sarah to help update and help work through and finalize these costs. This is just what was funded. I would point out one item in column E, row seven, there was three hundred and forty thousand contingency needed. I'm gonna work with Forrest and the folks at City Hall to determine how much that really is needed to toward project cost and how much is available toward, to be, to be used toward the debt service payments on the long-term debt. As a reminder, the short-term house, the short-term funded not only the most recent housing phase, but it also funded sports complex improvements and the Harlem Street Sewer Link. Uh, following page on page five, that's a breakdown of the uh, overall sources and uses for the existing debt issued in twenty-twenty-three. At the top right, you'll note the principal amount or par amount of eight million three twenty. Uh, that's what's in place now. It matures June one of next year and is currently callable. And we're looking at interest-only payments for the next three years through June of twenty-thirty, interest only through June of twenty-nine thirty. It will be the first principal payment on long term. Because there's no principal payments, there's, depending on what legislature does next year with TIP, we're not really gonna be able to move around any debt service in those next three years. So the payments are gonna be pretty set regardless of what they do or don't do next year. So that's kind of what we're, what we're looking at from a reality standpoint. Uh, the following page, page six, is a potential timeline. Again, this, I think this only makes sense now that we're very important, where we can, we're gonna be able to understand and appreciate the final project costs. The proposed first action is that the special joint meeting on July twenty-fourth, set in public hearing date, uh, for the August eleventh meeting. So that's just there for your review. And it assumes a financing that would close in late September. Just a first look at this, so you guys can get a, get a feel for what's, what's contemplated, what's proposed. Again, I think it only makes sense given we are getting pretty close to knowing the final project cost. The scenarios that are broken out are summarized on page seven. Uh, there are just three initial scenarios here. The city, uh, this has changed a lot versus, let's say, fifteen years ago. The city has about six million of legal debt capacity available. With that being the case, we, we aren't limited or constrained to look at annual appropriation debt for the long-term financing. What that, how the benefits the city is that the conventional financing, for example, shown in the second row, that's assumed to be, to be two point four million in scenario A. That's gonna be a much more cost-effective financing than annual appropriation debt. And that scenario A, breaking out the payment structures in, assuming column E, debt service in column G, that for the initial scenarios is your most cost-effective financing. Scenario B is again a split, but, um, has more of the payments toward the final maturity structure, toward the end of maturity structure up to twenty forty-five. Scenario C is annual appropriation only, and that's, that's just likely more costly than scenario A. I'll just hit one more page behind tab one as an introductory step. It feels like when we've talked about TIP a lot this year, it's been with a, kind of with challenges in front of us. I think this scenario lays out a good positive path forward. It assumes the dollar levy adjustment noted earlier. So what's, what's laid out then? This is scenario A. In column E is the annual appropriation debt payoff with a shorter maturity structure through twenty forty-two. Scenario, column F includes the conventional long-term debt, uh, the two point four million. Total tip debt is in column G. And then cash sources are noted, summarized basically at the top center of the page. You've got roughly one point one million as of June thirty, twenty twenty-five in both TIP and debt service. What's used at that is noted in column I. So the total of column I, noted at the bottom of the page is about five hundred and fifty-two thousand. That leaves about that one point one million after this period of time through June thirty of twenty twenty-nine, where the TIP revenues are on the skinny side. That leaves about five hundred and sixty-two thousand of cash between those two funds. At the top right of the page, uh, the interest earnings earned on the project notes during the time they've been outstanding is about a hundred and seventy-five thousand. I think this is gonna be higher, but you've got about at least, I think, a hundred thousand contingency remaining of the three hundred and forty thousand that was originally counted for. So that hundred and seventy-five plus one hundred gives us two hundred and seventy-five to work with. That's the money to be spent first is to be compliant with IRS spend down rules. So that's assumed to be spent in column J toward fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six debt service. And when you combine the two cash sources in columns I and J, every year in column M, we've, the yellow shaded areas where we were tied on TIP monies, every year is positive with this proposed financing approach. And then available TIP revenues below that yellow shaded area going forward are noted in the gray shading. And you can see the city sits pretty well in, in terms of funding for other potential TIP projects after that point in time. for other potential tip projects after that point in time. I think principally, you know, White Port Road, Cross Street would be, I think, is out of the area. That's just a starting point. Um, wanted to share this because it looks positive, but I think that is a reasonable path forward. And uh, can visit divided again on that twenty fourth of July here.
Yeah, that's a heck of a jump from looking at the yellow shaded area back up to that gray. That's a heck of a jump.
Exactly. It is. It surely is. And it's it's related to, it originates back in column C. The existing tip paid debt. And and if you look at label rows four, five, and six for fiscal year twenty seven, twenty eight, twenty nine. That's where the existing tip paid debt is elevated, drops down a lot.
Because we're paying stuff off.
Is you're paying stuff off. Exactly.
Gotcha. Yeah.
Then all that one third debt we did is coming back in.
That's right. You bet. So that's just informational for now. And uh, if you're open to it, we can start the public hearing process on July twenty fourth. Uh, doesn't necessarily mean you have to follow that timeline, but it's I think it's good to get started. Bond investors are looking for bonds to buy. So I know you're gonna have good app. I've got appetite to get attention on this means or if it's related to two things.
Chip, originally you asked, could possibly raise the levy a dollar and then you said maybe fifty cents. Do we have to wait till next year or can you do it at the end of this year?
It'd be part of your budget process in early, early twenty twenty six. I know it's not an easy or popular thing, but I something that might help frame it. You don't need to do it forever. It can actually be three years and done. So um, it's a little bit variable because we don't know what the legislature is gonna do. I'd encourage dollar fifty cents might work.
And at one time we were sixteen seventeen, right?
You had a lot of years historically where the city's overall levy was eighteen dollars plus.
I was gonna say it was like closer nineteen or something.
Yeah, yeah, when it was over twenty, the one year, twenty dollars per thousand. So the uh current roughly fifty dollars and fifty cents is pretty decent.
Nice. So thanks, Jim.
Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you.
Now, does Jim have a copy of this? No, he should have.
That's his stuff that he gets every month.
But this is a story.
This is what I get this day. Just combine all this information, put it here.
But being the head department head, he ought to have this.
Absolutely. Like I said, every month he get this information. And you just combine these and give it to the I, the bottom transportation. Do you have a question, Mr. Mayor?
Are you gonna explain this in order or are we just gonna prove it? Okay, yeah, go ahead.
This view would say some that include what the money that we spend from the general fund. Expenses is forty six thousand seven hundred seventy dollars. That's what we spend from the general fund. Off sell each other between expenses and revenue. Next one, that's how much we spend from the road use. The beginning balance was three hundred forty eight. We spend two seventy one and we receive two hundred fifty four. The debt service that we pay, which is South Seventh Street, that's a principal and interest. Capital project that the street buy that we get for free. That's why it's offset each other between expense and revenue. And that add up to the grand total. That's the summary and the details of all these things goes next. The revenue, as I highlighted in the summary, goes like that. The money we leave for the streets, thirty eight thousand. And sale of asset, eight thousand. Road use, that's the money we receive, two hundred fifty three from the state. The capital, interest we make on the money in the bank, debt service, it's principal and interest. And that all add up to the grand total on the right side. The expenses is what we do from general fund. You have training and use seven thousand. Other equipment we spend money on, small equipment we live in. Ostrich and safety, fifteen, building one seven, one thousand, snow removal, ten thousand. Next one is the road use who's been on the training and use with TV. Minor equipment, safety, other equipment, one twenty. This is the biggest one here who we bought the streets we bought. Yeah. And then you hold it in service with interest and principal forty thousand, principal seven thousand interest. Capital project with the three thousand that the street life we get it free. And they all add up to the grand total. That's expensive. Well, issue as we explained, that's three hundred eighty five principal forty seven, sorry, three hundred eighty five, that's the portion of the South Seven. Uh, principal forty, interest seven, that add up the forty seven nine oh five that you saw on the summary. Next one, equipment ensures what we bought, the one hundred twenty that streets we bought. And that that's it very much. That's the information that you get in the packet. In your packet right now, if you take this information that I wrote at the finance, it's all described in OTC, month by month by month. You have what you have actually this month is about June at the end of the year. All the information on that report right in your bag.
From so much of wages are coming out of this road use too. What line is that?
From the road use. You know, you have seventeen. And you have those which give you the super capital that I gave you to make it much easier. The result that I have with you. Thank you.
So you said this this thing you just went through is something you give to the state?
You have to ask about this solution and you have to give it to the state every year. We've been doing that for the last seventy one years.
Sarah, can you make a copy of it? What weighed out and give it to Jim and that?
See, this, that's what you have in your packet.
Hundred and two thousand?
Yes.
Wages?
Yes, that's six seventy. You exist information and you go into. That's the only thing. And it happens that you have that month that you take all this information and you go into.
You put it in a different kind of format.
And if Jim needs anything, he usually told me every day.
So I need a motion to approve this. Second, okay, how do you go? Patrick?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Cava?
Yep.
Okay, twelve, resolution number twenty five fifteen C, preventing construction traffic on Northeast Second. You want to talk about this, Jim?
Oh, I can, yes. Just we've had a lot of issues with heavy equipment and everything coming down Second Street. When they were putting in the sewer and the water in the street and all that, and now we've got equipment moving into the basements and and you know, delivery trucks bringing, you know, semi loads or afters and trusses. There's a lot of kids. It's summertime. They're outside. There's parking allowed on one side of the street. I just think it's way better if we bring them in off the highway. Besides, we've got a section of street out there. It's gonna get uh removed here shortly because it's failed from phase two and the contractor did not fix it, refused to fix it. Uh, so they're getting that falls in my lap to take care of. So um it's gonna be shut down on one side and then we'll jump sites and shut down the other side. Once we get that. James tries to do it every day. He knows where it's at.
So when they apply for their building permits, can they recontact and say all your?
So and Matt has been working with all of the builders as well to inform them that all of their, you know, subcontractors and stuff need to use, need to access that site from the highway. And then we, I mean, they've already, they already broke the curb once and we had it replaced and it's broke again.
Yeah, I was just wondering, so what happens if we do do something like this? What happens? Say the road that's coming off the highway has a blow up or the pavement buckle. Now it's shut down and there's houses that need stuff in. Now these delivery trucks, they can't get in period because now they can't go down this street. And if we got that blocked off on that other street, those guys are kind of S O L then.
Cover nothing at that time. That's the case.
I could say it's there'd be room for us to make an exception if something drastic like that happened. I think we could, we could look at doing that. It's because this is gonna be, it's not gonna be there.
They would have to be on a per case basis. Yeah. We've got emergency access. We've got a, first off, we've got to protect the we've got to protect the occupants, the residents out there and also the infrastructure.
And that was our full intent when we put that down there so that they could use that to come up and they'll build that out to begin with. And thank you, Matt, for doing that. You got something to do with that.
I was, I was ball ball free. I watched a contractor come in, got off a piece of equipment. They entered on Tiven Way. Hit every curve like he aimed for. unloaded his equipment. When he exited, instead of going back through Tiven, he went down Northeast Second. I chased him down, confronted him about it. I told you, I told him that you guys have been called numerous times and he replied back, there's no signs.
Okay, so well, that's pretty, I'll make the motion. Thanks, Jim.
Yeah.
Second, James, how do you go? Patrick?
No.
Russell?
Yes, Morgan.
Cava?
Yep.
Okay, thirteen, Forrest?
Forrest, I need to speak to him. I think the first agenda item is the agreement for a certified site. Is that right? Okay. So the Isle Economic Development Authority, I E D A, came out and gave a presentation to the council about looking at putting together a uh application for a certified site. I went before the utility board last week and talked about this as well. And this is just initial first step. This is just, you know, discussions with the property owner, putting together the notice application, putting a map together. And the utility board uh X approved this and they're asking the council to fund a third of it. So whatever sixty, sixty two hundred dollars divided by three.
Ask if it will be one, two.
About twenty two hundred or something like that?
Yeah.
Close enough.
Okay, we need a motion.
I'll move that.
Second, how do you go? Patrick?
I'm all for it. I just don't think it's the time right now. No.
Okay, Russell?
No.
Morgan? Cava?
Yep.
Motion okay. Three two is it?
All right.
Okay, B?
Yeah, I don't know. Yeah. Decide that whether you bring it up again or not, we have the, I'll I'll find it. So B, uh, this is this is the real discussion. So Mackenich is saying they are done with all the work. Jim and Matt and myself are gonna meet with Mackenich on Friday. We're gonna do a final walkthrough. Look at everything. We think they're pretty darned close, but we haven't looked at everything in detail, looked hither and yon and in the back and all that. Uh, so we're gonna do that. Uh, this would be for payment for uh work done. We withheld money for this on the lift station last time. So this would be the payment for the lift station. Finalizing up everything, but we're still holding two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in the retainer. And we're not accepting the project. So this is just a partial payment estimate. So because they've got everything done, think they've got everything done, uh, this payment estimate is for forty six thousand three hundred dollars for finishing up the lift station work, which I think that's done.
Yeah, they come and kind of scratched up the ground and threw some hydro seat down.
Things we'll look at Friday, but maybe there's some surface restoration stuff, but the lift station's working, functioning. Controls.
Everything except the dialer.
Bunch of stuff that you gotta do. Yeah. It's not like we're getting them off the hook. They still need to fix things. It's fine.
Yes, we're not accepting anything. We're holding the two hundred fifty thousand to bill. It's everything's done.
Forrest, all those liquidated damages that the taxes would have been brought in.
All right. Good lead in there, man. It's like you had that planned. So one of the, one of the things that I do want to discuss is part of this. This is what I emailed out earlier today. So one of the, you know, we're withholding two hundred fifty thousand dollars and and what I'm looking for for an input from the council is what we want to withhold for liquidated damages. We would not, I don't necessarily need that input today, but we, I would like to have the input at least uh by your joint meeting on the July, July twenty fourth?
July.
July twenty fourth. Well, I brought this up before. Um, and the feeling from the council at that time is they want to go all the way until it was done, done. Which if you look at the top of page two, I put different scenarios there. And I put the actual there too. So uh, so it kind of concentrated on that table, kind of in the middle, top middle of page two. So the contractual amount is the one ninety. We, if we look at when we started issuing deeds for lots, which, you know, we started, we didn't Seab was not comfortable doing that until we were pretty darned close to being done. Uh, that's the one thirty two and then starting to dig basements, uh, that would be the one sixty seven. Um, and then I had some other ones in there, you know, kind of lighter amounts of pavement complete. Lift station startup, John, done the generator training. So I had some different kind of things. And but I know before the council was kind of pushing at the one ninety, I think that is gonna be pretty hard to defend, but we can, you know, the council wants to go there, we can. Uh, and then we can have that discussion with Mackenich and go from there. But that is something I'm looking for input from the council. And again, if you want to give it to me tonight, that's great. If you want to think about this, read through the letter. This is kind of a reworded letter of one I sent before, but.
What are you saying that it's gonna be hard to defend for that one ninety?
Uh, the courts have have ruled that uh they go that getting the grass done and everything going is have have ruled that more is based on substantial completion. When did you have beneficial use and occupancy of the project? So they use that, the courts have used that as a cutoff, not so much the surface restoration was done, you know, all the cleanup was done, you know, those types of things.
But um, I guess the way I see this, they're a year over.
Yes.
So I I guess, I mean, I'm confused of like, what kind of like do they have to stand on if they're a year over?
No, they don't. I'm not saying it's a zero. I I'm just saying it might be. No, they don't, I'm not saying it's a zero, I, I'm just saying it might be more when the needs were issued at the basements.
Oh, I see what you're saying, okay, yep, 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 I see what you're saying, yeah, okay.
That's kind of what I was looking at, you know, well, we finally got basement started, you know, if we went something like that, said, well, that's what we were looking for back in June of last year, you know, to start having basements, now they do it here, so we say, okay, so that's what we were looking for originally, so now you got it done, so that puts us in that one sixty-seven five.
Or when, or, or when, you know, where your lots were given to builders, that would be the one thirty-two.
I'm already on that one.
Just because you got a lot out there, doesn't mean they're doing anything, you know, right, put a basement in, it means that you have more, you get a house on, you start getting taxes, that's what we're looking for.
So I guess that would be, I, I agree with Mike, I'd, I'd be right there with the comment.
Any, any other different thoughts on, on that?
I kind of agree with the one sixty-seven five, it makes sense, I mean, yeah, we can issue lots in December, not take basements, so we got actual use out of it, which is digging a basement.
Okay, that's what you'll see for the final number and then go from there, so yeah, appreciate that input. Oh. We still have, we're done. And so the question is, you know, do we wanna make payment for the forty-six thousand three hundred for the work that they have done out there? And I would recommend that they, that we make that payment. Make a motion?
I'll second it.
Second, Patrick, how do you go, Patrick?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Cabal?
No.
Thank you, Morgan.
Okay. All right, thank you very much.
Good. James, George, Community Development, Matt phone?
Then in communications with Region Twelve regarding the CDEG grant, our Community Development Lot Grant. And they need to have numbers on the number of low to moderate income residents in the community. And they do that, they acquire that number by sending out surveys. And the cost to send out those surveys is seven hundred dollars, that's proposed, that's not paying Region Twelve or anything. For services, that's just proposed to, to send out the surveys. What that does is allows, once we get the numbers back, if we fall below the threshold for low to moderate income, that opens us up to continue on applying for Community Development Lot Grants. Any questions?
Would they expect us back? You said they're gonna survey, right? I was kind of involved.
Oh, they would, they would mail those out.
Oh, they have been mailed out, yeah.
No, this is to mail out the survey.
Sir, you know, I turned it to mail for the survey, a lot of people throw this stuff away, can you do it online or?
No, I've asked all those questions, they, they need to, this is the way they've done it for thirty years, and they need to get those surveys back, that's how they track what the results are.
Even the little notices in our license plate, you know, grass clipping everything.
We, we can check that out, we'll try that as an option, but the survey's gonna take way more than the one-third sheet of paper that we can send out at each time. So this allows us to apply for grants for the, the Community Development Lot Grants, they have a number of bands.
Return is very good that we did this survey.
Some examples of, just for this Community Development Lot Grants, is there the recent recipients and steward?
Yeah, the water tower. So the information that they needed, they had the information at that time, the information that they need now is now expired, has to be done every five years.
How much is that for the water tower? A lot.
Yeah.
Remember the numbers on that?
I think it's five hundred thousand dollars.
The grant there is seven, seven hundred dollars.
We also utilize CDEG when we upgraded the treatment plant two thousand.
Right.
And what's, what's our crossing in, I'm sorry.
Seven hundred dollar.
I won't make a motion.
Second, how do you go, Patrick?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yep.
Cabal?
Yes.
Okay, thanks, Matt. Okay, B?
Jordan Marks has submitted interest in the Lot Thirty-three, the stormwater retention project. The lot that, yeah, the city had agreed to go ahead and separate and put a sidewalk on, separate that from Lot Thirty-three, and the city would maintain it. Jordan Marks is interested in, in that lot, however, only if the city is still willing to pay the cost to separate it and pay for the sidewalk. He would then take ownership of it and repay it if he partied his yard. Just, he offered it, which is giving you the information.
Ownership of the retention basin?
Yes.
He wants us to separate it and then he wants to own it?
He's separated from Lot Thirty-three.
Right.
And then.
But then he wants to just maintain it?
And then he, he wants the lot, he would, it shifts the Lot Thirty-three to his property, to the side of it.
So why would we separate it then?
Gotta separate it from Lot Thirty-three.
Yeah. Mine says, okay, so you're saying, so they're together now, right, and he says, and he says, separate it.
Separate the stormwater retention.
Right, from the lot.
From Lot Thirty-three.
And then we do all of our stuff that we kind of proposed to do, and then he wants ownership of the retention basin?
Yes, he would, he's gonna buy that lot then, he didn't offer to buy it.
I am, I'm missing something here.
Yeah, me too.
Does he live in Lot Thirty-three?
No, he lives at the lot south of it.
I don't think he knows where he lives.
Okay, he lives around the lot directly south of it.
And stone to.
Part of, part of his property is that retention basin.
Oh, so he doesn't want Lot Thirty-three?
No.
He just wants to separate it. He just wants to separate it.
He wants the rest of the retention basin, correct, Matt?
Yes.
Then why didn't you just say it like that? Okay.
Clear as much.
So, what's your take on that?
What would he do with it?
I mean, I mean, what the council directed last month was that we rent Lot Thirty-three includes the basin, right?
Yes.
So we're gonna separate the basin from Lot Thirty-three, so we'll build a lot on Lot Thirty-three, and the city was gonna now own and maintain that basin. So this would be taking that base, instead of the city owned it, it's gonna be owned by Mr. Marks, Mr. Marks, and he would own it and maintain it and have to mow it.
Pay taxes on it.
And pay taxes on it, and the, the cost of the city is sidewalk plus the, plus the cost of the the legal work that we were doing, we approved to do already. So it's just, you know, it's whether you want to, as a city, get out of owning and maintaining that retention basin.
You under that?
You wanna mow it, Jim?
Nope. His mowing stuff. Uh, or, my only, my only concern would be somewhere in the language, it needs to be where, it needs to be maintained as it is. That structure of that holy basin cannot change.
Yeah.
Because it was engineered and designed for a specific purpose.
Right.
Yeah, you can't fill it in or anything like that.
Yeah, I mean, something, if we had something like that, I, I would, I mean, if we don't have to have somebody going out there and doing anything, that's just a little bit less that we have to put out.
And our fee for doing all the legal work was twenty-five hundred dollars.
Yeah, so, I mean.
And you got the sidewalk.
Yeah, it's.
Five thousand or something, didn't we say? So about seventy-five hundred.
Over the years, you save that cost.
Yes. And that lot may not otherwise sell without doing that, we were gonna do it anyways.
Right. So.
Hold on, a motion? James, Phil, James.
I think it's, I kind of don't bring the children, it's easier, it's fun, yeah, it's just, nobody's picking out trash or having them mow it.
Second?
I'll say it.
Second, okay, how do you go, then? Cabal?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Patrick? I reversed it.
Same name, don't add, uh, yes.
Okay.
All right.
Thanks, Matt.
Thanks, Matt.
And then, uh, my report?
Oh, okay.
Wouldn't tell you that, uh, everybody's been out there, Keystone has two foundations out there, I think they've already got building, Savannah has foundation out there, and Savannah also has two approved permits. Keystone has submitted a couple other permits that have need to be evaluated. So I think we're still off to a good start on that. First National Bank Building, the IEDA Director Debbie Durham authorized the project reactivation under emergency provisions, so last month's decision to approve the TIF funding for that project is underway, and we did get the grant award letter from IEDA as well. Okay, all right, thank you.
Uh, good job, Matt. One question for you, Matt. Who's mowing out there?
The Womble?
Yeah.
Uh, John Swinger. No, well, so he's, has.
Okay, 'cause a couple weeks ago I was out there and I was not happy, I was like, wow, we're trying to attract people to town and it looks like this. And if I was Mr. Doley, I would be very upset that that was next to my house, but since then, I drove out there last night, it's like, huh, that's a huge improvement, but I, I think we might, might need to keep up on that a little more often, because that did not look good out there at all, so, that's just my two cents on that.
Yeah, that's true.
Yeah, there's thistles tied to it.
Yeah, it was true.
Okay, you done it up? You got a question for Matt?
No. I have something for public forum.
Okay, we'll go public forum, first thing I want to say, joint meeting, right? Oh, you got something else, Jim?
No, I've got public, oh, public forum.
Okay, but joint meeting, July twenty-fourth, five thirty?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, Jim?
It wasn't on the agenda, so Monday we had a meeting with eight Eric County engineers and their engineering firm, starting next year, they're going to replace the bridge directly south of Stewart, they're just north of Hundred Eighteenth. So they will run detour traffic, they figure that will take about a year. And they will run detour traffic to Hundred Thirtieth over to Victor, north to Hundred Tenth, back to the highway, they're by Quick Star. And then the following year, they are going to widen the shoulders from Hundred Thirtieth clear up into Stewart. They will make those shoulders eight feet wide, so there's quite a bit that's involved in that, because they have to do land acquisition, because they're gonna widen those out and then change that forest slope, so they've got to do land acquisition and everything, and I encouraged them several times during that meeting to stay in contact with Forest. Have they reached out to you at all yet?
Okay.
They're just in the early planning stages on that, but they, they had some questions that I directed in the forest, as in whether we want a rural road section coming in, because I mean, we have everything clear to South Sixteenth Street. And so part of that will be a city cost. And whether we want a rural road section coming in, or if we want to change that to an urban road section where there's curb and gutter. If there's curb and gutter, then they don't need as much shoulder room. The engineers talked about the curb and gutter section maybe with assistance slowing down the traffic coming in. It's better experience, anyway, so just keep that in your radar, that, that's going to be an incoming cost in probably the twenty-seven, twenty-eight budget year.
Chip's about ready to fall on me.
Sorry, Chip. But just keep that back in your mind. And that.
Thanks, Joe.
Anybody else over there in public forum?
Name's your name?
It's Anna Garrick, six, twelve, North Division. And, uh, six eleven's right behind me, so, and I know that was a topic of discussion and you're brushing aside for next month. But who's gonna take care of the property? I know this last storm, tree branches fell down, and I am all for that, but what I'm not for is picking up the giant tree branches in the alley as city workers drive by and wait at me. Especially when they land next to his truck.
Jim was left.
Well, currently that city owns that, so.
Well, yeah, the city owns the alley, I don't, and I don't appreciate it.
As well, we're asking, we need.
We're constantly maintaining that property.
Week or month or.
This is now going on since the, the place torched.
And someone needs to put a fence, because kids are playing there, people are going in that house.
You keep telling me that somebody's gonna buy it, and so, and we're still cleaning up the place.
Now, you're saying the house will break down?
Yes, the one that looks out, this is supposed to be taken care of.
We just approved that tonight.
Okay, so then, you told me last month that that was supposed to be getting taken care of, and yet it's still not.
Takes time with the public here and.
Okay, so when it got torched, how come the fire department didn't put tape up, or the police department didn't put tape up? Why wasn't that done? Instead, we have the community driving by, up and down the alleys, looking at it, we have kids walking through there, picking litter, I mean, for God's sakes, you had kids grabbing golf clubs. Now the man's dead. And we're doing what? Before that, he was living in the house, and it was clearly condemned.
And we were in the process of moving.
But you knew it, you knew he was living there, so why didn't we do anything about it?
We were, it takes time off.
How much time? And now you want us to do what? Because I have giant tree branches laying across the road and I'm picking those up, he removed them on Saturday.
Because they blocked the whole alley away.
The roof is completely caved in.
And next to it, when that tree falls out and hits my shop, do I send you the bill?
Yeah, but, or do we just claim homeowners insurance and hope and pray that everything is inside our shop?
Two trees that are bound and firmly fall down soon.
Is gonna be okay with it, because half the trailer already blew into his trailer.
But Dick, you just told me earlier, you have the okay to do an emergency one that they did not do on ours on North Gangs. So.
It's a good, good for you guys.
They've got the emergency to cut your speed down. Yeah.
Nash, can we just send, uh, Jim or Josh over there tomorrow, let's get the alley cleaned up.
We already cleaned up there.
I already did all that, right?
Well, let me finish, please, okay? Send Josh and Jim over there, if you don't mind.
Yes.
See what needs to be done, if, bare minimum, I'm sure that they do have plastic snow fence, they should probably probably contain what's over there until Luis takes over, just to keep the kids and stuff out there.
Because that's my concern, because the tree branches, like this last storm Thursday, I would say four or five more trees fell in that roof. And it is.
It said ninety percent.
Caved in now, and I don't want a kid to get hurt. Like, I'm not, my kids are a lot over there, but.
No, I totally agree.
There's a family that lives right behind Erie, who's across from Division. They're constantly playing over there, and the youngest is probably in kindergarten or should have been in kindergarten. And they're notorious for being over there.
Maybe Jim just needs to put up the picket fence or.
Yeah, we need, yeah.
But it should have been.
Appreciate you bringing that up. Thank you.
If they else have anything. Yes. So you're new to town then, right?
I am.
What's your name?
George England. I've been here for about a year.
Okay.
Um, I got one thing, if you care, on that thing. If it burned, the fire department shouldn't have done something, or if the city just wants to tear down, or to save the guy's asshole, just that's why I, I don't know, city code. Um, my thing, so when I first got here, everything fine, Danny, no problems. Uh, I'm with Shelby Renslow, Shelby Works. Uh, she was harassed with her dog multiple times. Her dogs got out, happened. Soon as I got to town, I was harassed by parking the grass. I talked to somebody, and this was right after the Green Bull tornado, was when I had all my stuff up there. But I was just getting kind of like a sticky nail on my windshield on my pickup.
Code enforcement guy?
No, this was, it just said, can't park in grass, thanks city of Stewart. So I don't know, I've not, I've not got that for six, eight months now. So that was one thing I wanted to bring up is, do you know who would have done that, or if that's neighbors or?
Probably not.
To go, to go back to the dogs, though, the dogs were confronting people, chasing people.
Yep, well, she has the one now.
Yeah, she got rid of it.
And then mine is there, and I think somebody had an issue with it. I don't know, somebody. Um, so now with the whole code thing, I've been harassed with like my lawn care stuff sitting by the garage. Kayaks, just kids toys. I have two kids, she's got three. What is the, I guess, the code thing for, it's a rock area around the garage. It is covered with grass. I try and spray whatever. But if you go a five block radius around her house, or anywhere in Stewart, you've got a trampoline sitting over here, you've got kids toys throughout the yard. But if it's all picked up and put by a garage, why am I getting in trouble?
Is this through code enforcement?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yeah.
Okay, well, that's what I say, have you called?
I just talked to them.
Okay.
This week, but I've got, I don't even know. I give a stack of.
Yeah.
We've had this issue before.
Because it comes back to like what they said about tree branches. I get like bushes and shrubs if it looks as as ordinary, but like, stuff like that. And then she's got a shed that, I don't know what I'm dealing with. It's got a hole from a tree branch that fell down, it's rotted. I think about tearing it down, but I don't know if I'm going to stay here, so I don't want to put money on to her property by a shed, whatever, build a shed, do whatever. Um, so that was another thing. Um, was harassed with my dad's pickup there. It's licensed, it was insured, it does move. He can move it every once in a while, or if he, if my pickup was down, um, that was another thing.
I would like to see that sticky note, because when our police.
I said, I asked Daniel, Shane and.
Wasn't them.
The one that lived down right by the clearing on rehab, I think. Like, no one, I don't know if it was just a neighbor. Like, it stopped. So after I confronted people about it and asked, I never got it again, never got on my company truck. Everything, so I didn't know if that was.
Because our, our places have an official notice.
Yep, yeah, this is like, I don't know, like a six by six sticky pad. But it was all white, but it is a city of Stewart at the bottom, so I didn't know if it was concerned neighbor. Um, other than that, with the whole Iowa code guy, is this going to be a running issue? Because he said it's, you guys heard this a couple months ago, and it's been, I've not been the only issue with this, I guess.
I guess, I mean, you you've contacted my father.
Yeah, he said he's going to be here sometime this week or whatever.
Not before he called me.
Okay. Because if I keep getting things, I mean, I don't like to be an asshole or anything. I just, if it's something I can control, I'll do my damnedest, make it happen. But if it's stuff that I'm going to get, like ride on toys, bicycles, kayaks, you can't really put all that stuff up. And I know that's been one thing that he's net picked, plus, um, when my dad struck was there, my personal red pickup and my company truck. So I had three vehicles plus her car. That was a thing that he'd take pictures of pickups and stuff. And then when I was working on my front end, I had a picture of my pickup on jack stands, tore apart, but he didn't, he didn't have that for my pickup. It was for another pickup. And I was like, it's not tore apart, it moves. So I don't know. I don't know, it's more of like me and him had to deal with that, or?
Yes, I'm not involved that much anymore. You can come to a public hearing if you got complaints. But as far as code is supposed to be areas and back for, the one thing to note, when it does come winter time, you cannot park on any street.
Yeah.
You got to be up off the cliff.
Yeah, and then that goes back to the grass thing. You guys are, I mean, it's one pickup parked in the grass, or like he, I had a little trailer with tree branches and stuff. And he would, made a big deal about that, too.
You know we have a compost area on Saturday or something.
I just found that out a couple weeks ago, so.
And, yeah, I I just keep doing what you're doing. Talk to Harrison. He is a nice guy. He will.
I said, I called him and he, he sounded good. He's like, oh, look into it. He's like, I don't know, maybe I added stuff on. I was like, lady, this is like the fifth thing I've got. You, we do one thing, and it's like six more things added to it. I'm like, we're like, why wasn't all this on one thing?
Sure.
Later around, I mean, I did, I had the same thing with the city one time. I used a butter rag. A buddy of mine has a stock car. We had trailers in my alley, my garage, everything. But there's houses that are way worse that has abandoned vehicles sitting in weeds, ten foot tall around. And like, I don't know if they are getting it, or backyards that are completely junk and.
Sir can show you this, monster list.
Okay, I said, I'm just making sure I wasn't the only one, so. Well, that's all I got. Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, um, so I don't know who would handle this. I had a resident express some displeasure at, uh, the thistles that are growing out along South Eighth Street. Uh, they've been mowed. Uh, wouldn't that be our code guy to contact whoever owns that to have some spraying? Are they supposed to be sprayed?
I think so.
I mean, I see notices where they talk about noxious weeds.
I mean, gets a notice and first notice and sudden notice and whatever.
Who owns that out there, can we even, though?
Is that supposed to be pasture or mowed area?
I, I don't know, Wes, right? I think any noxious weed is supposed to be, you see it from the counties and stuff, or maybe even the state. I've seen posting, you know, you got some noxious weeds. And I think that would go for the same out at Womble, you know, we should be not just letting that stuff grow up.
I mean, normally, if you can send me the address, although many deans will want to usually take care of them, the police.
They said it's all along South, South Eighth, yeah, out there. Now, I drove out there, I can't see that far. They've probably been mowed down, but still, you know, just for future reference, I think we need to have somebody on that, a code guy or somebody, who I can say, hey, I'm supposed to spray these, you know, keep them down. Come into my yard, your yard, everybody's yard here, his yard, you know.
Not me, I'm just saying, you can't, like, the city can, or whoever owns that property can't get in trouble with the state if they're not maintaining it's spraying.
Yeah.
With spray. So that was all I, so.
Yeah, normally, when there's a complaint, the police have got right, their yard needs mowed, and then they email, contact the person.
Yeah, they just stop me and say.
Then if it isn't taken care of, swinger and different people's in charge of cleaning it up. All right. Anything else?